Can I have your attention before we start?
Yes.
Line item number seven under new business, letter F, Deer Park City Hall facility. We will take public input at that point. So if you did sign up to speak and if you're going to wait for that, then you can cross your name up. Otherwise, the way to start, I'd like to welcome you to the April 19th, 2023 City Hall meeting. We'll call our office to this. To my left, stranger Dee Cragan. He's been missing for a long time. Glad to have you back.
Thank you.
Jason Upchurch on the fold is Heather Newsome. To my right, Caleb Staff, Naomi Diaz, Community Service Director Roger Krieger, City Clerk Treasurer Debbie Cragan. I ask you at this time to stand for the invocation. Deacon Phil Nicholas is going to do that.
Thank you, Mayor. Please bow your heads as we pray together. Heavenly Father, as we gather for this meeting, may you shower your abundant blessings on each one of us and to prepare everyone's hearts for the agenda items that will be discussed. Help our leaders be a blessing by how they speak and conduct themselves. Let everything discussed align with your word, and may everyone speak humbly when presenting their ideas. And in your wisdom and mercy, guide and inspire our mayor, city council members, and other city officials who serve the people of Deer Park, and to conduct themselves with a spirit of love, with joy, and enthusiasm. And we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item four, approval of agenda.
Motion to approve.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to carry. Item five, approval of April 5th, 2023, regular council meeting minutes.
Aye.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, interested citizens, oral communications, requests, and comments from the audience on unrelated agenda items. Mayor, Mayor Mike, would you like to speak, please? You're first up.
You know, Jim, I'll wait until the City Hall discussion comes up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tim, scratch me off because I just want to talk about the ordinance. It's, so I don't leave me on the list.
No.
Linda, you're up.
Well, mine really has to do with the City Hall and the police, so I can wait till then or speak now.
Okay. Yeah, I will take questions from the audience on that. Jeff.
For the remodel.
Okay.
Is that now or then?
Then.
And what?
Then.
Then, Jeff. Brandon.
Okay, I just, I'm glad everybody's here. I want to talk about something that should have been addressed before City Hall. I'm very disappointed in the city council. A year ago, we came up in March and said, we're going to start investing in Deer Park. And we had those meetings, we were talking about Swinyard Park, and we were going to maybe replace the pool and stuff. I'm just so disappointed that we've decided to do absolutely nothing. But I am thankful for one thing is we had some young people at the last meeting show up and say, we want to put the courts in, new courts. We're interested in our community. As a person that's followed politics for 17 years, what he's politely saying is, as community leaders, you are unengaged in your community, you are not paying attention to what people want, and so they're letting themselves be known. I'm glad we're focusing on a City Hall, but had we focused on this park, we could next summer have had shovels in the ground, built community morale. And I just kind of feel like this whole City Hall little project has been not so much something that's for the community, but something of a personal vanity project, it seems just to me. But that's just my comments. It's just a shame, and I'm really disappointed with what happened to Swinyard Park, that's also, or excuse me, Mix Park, the little incident that happened last week. I think that's also a result of our community leaders not being focused on some of the things that make this community good. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Ben. Dave?
Not at this time.
Okay. Richie?
For a change of tone, I guess we'll go to the Northwest Management about Main and Crawford. I know there's a study coming up that looking at, looking at what could be done at Main and Crawford to better work on the traffic flow there. What I'd really encourage the city council to do is look at the city as a whole and how that traffic impacts Main and Crawford, because there aren't a lot of roads that allow for northwest, or north-south and east and west traffic, except for Main and Crawford. So there needs to be some plans put forward to create some other ways to take that burden off of that. Part of maintaining a small-town feel is maintaining the traffic flow that we already have in those places and creating new ways for the traffic to get to the new expansions. So to look for other places where, like Sixth Street could connect through, that would require crossing the railroad, but that could be done over by Mix Park. There's some other places over by the Habitat for Humanity that could go up towards the high school and connect up there. That would take a lot of the burden off of some of the traffic that's coming in with the new developments. So I'd encourage the city council to look at some of those options in addition to Main and Crawford.
Thank you. Bill, you're up.
I'm going to do it out there in the city hall.
Okay. Next up, Michelle.
Right here. Hi. My concern is also the roads with all the houses coming in, bringing in things for our youth. I'm, we have five children, so we understand, and they range from 14 to two, so giving us something to do, bringing in maybe something like riding bikes. I mean, we ride a loop, but there's no streetlights at certain places, and we ride in the dark. So bringing in things like that, more parks, better parks that we feel safe going to. Also, the police, but you know, I think we're going to talk about that later. Especially the roads, you know, with more people coming in, that needs to be something that's definitely thought of and prepared, because we could very soon be letting ourselves down if we're building all these houses and then not having the roads that we need for everybody living here. And also, you know, we need to represent our community, and I feel like our main streets could be more of like, put the flowers up and make it nice and warming instead of it just being kind of plain Jane and, you know, unforgotten.
A little more decor.
Exactly, yeah. A little, a little thing goes a long ways.
Thank you. Ryan, do you want to wait?
No, I'll go now. Brian Moore, council members, audience, awesome to see all sorts of people here. I just always like to bring up austerity, frugality, and I would like that to be the tone when you're thinking of spending dollars. These are not your dollars. Example of what has happened in this town over the last 10 years, we have a chamber of commerce that was at one point running a budget where they were not able to keep a full-time person and had to cut back, located here just behind us. The chamber adjusted the budget, adjusted the goals for fundraising, and was able to have a surplus budget and establish a, an overflow emergency fund, 20%, or the intention was to have one year of, of costs for both employment and covering expenses. That was dipped into and used for other things. The chamber decided to leave this location and go to a different location, and now the chamber is not here any longer, but instead in the basement. So I would like for you to kind of keep those ideas in mind when you're looking at spending dollars. It's nice when you have them, it's nice when you see them, and sometimes the things that you go after, you end up back in mom and dad's basement. So please, keep that in mind as you manage the dollars here, and thank you again for being here and the work you do. I appreciate it. I like this town.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, next, next up under new business, item seven, letter A, notice to title, City of Deer Park Global Improvement District, number 2013-01, confirmation. Roger, let's begin now.
Yeah, so if you go to the very last page, there's a, or photo there of the proposed lot line adjustment on Sixth Street that they're planning to do. What this document is, is that typically is a administrative function that we do in my office, and it takes a boundary line in this case, and takes a little bit off one parcel, makes the other parcel bigger. That's called a minor change, and we can do it administratively. In this case, the parcel that fronts Sixth Street is impacted by the local improvement district that we had originally for the first phase of the Cedar Road project. Well, because of that, and that parcel's changing, we have to, this document, basically, the owner had the option of pay off the LID, which is about $44,000, or have this document filed against his property that he knows that, and it gets recorded against the parcel that this extension of land will also have this same LID assessment against it should get over to say, oh, somebody wants to build on it, so some of those kinds of things. So this is a first step that we have to get done and recorded prior to the boundary line adjustment process because of the LID.
Any questions or comments about council?
Make a motion to approve. One second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thanks, Heather. Item B, letter of engagement, professional services, Northwest Management Incorporated. Daryl, you want to speak on that?
Yes, so this is the second half of the cost share agreement that we had with DNR at the last council meeting. This engages Northwest Timber Management to actually put the plan together. In the agreement, they will keep the cost under 5,000, and if DNR participates, they will pay 50% of that cost to develop a, a plan of forest management going forward.
Do we entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve. One second.
Make a motion, second. Any comments or questions by the councils? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item C, wastewater spray farm, fertilizer seed, herbicide, Bill Ward, the AL Farm Service and Supply, Roger?
So in our budget every year, we budget for funds of about $30,000 between fertilizer, crop testing, soil testing, all those kinds of things that happen at the wastewater spray farm where we dispose of all the wastewater effluent. As part of the agreement we have with the farmer, we're responsible, we're on the hook, so to speak, to, to provide seed, fertilizer, materials like that up to the $25,000 limit. After that, they're his costs. So this, we have to bid it out every year because of the, over the $3,500 bid law that the auditor requires, and so this has been put out to bid, and we had one received back from Laysale Farm Service and Supply of Clayton for 25,000. We just need your word so we can provide our products for the spray farm operation that we're under obligation to do.
I make a motion to approve. One second.
Your motion is second. Any comments or questions by the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next up, item D, task order 2023-06, Crawford Avenue and Main Street intersection improvements, preliminary engineering, JUV, and engineers incorporated. Roger?
So the, the task order in front of you has a little bit of the history. I thought it kind of filled you in on, because most of you weren't here during the time. Dee might have been on the clock at the time, I don't recall exactly, but we discussed this at budget time, and Main and Crawford was one of the four intersections that the council authorized to study in 2002 relative to traffic patterns and development at that time, as related to those intersections that had the lowest level of service that our comprehensive plan talks about. In, in traffic terms, you have levels A through F, F being the worst, obviously, A the best. And so the four intersections that were studied at the time were Crawford and Weber, Crawford and Caldwell, Crawford and Main, and H and Main. None of those intersections, they're all either equipped with four-way stops, two-way stops, or uncontrolled. And so the study at the time identified those intersections, talked about funding, and from that, the council developed traffic mitigation fee that we assess on subdivision plats, we assess on new building permits for homes or commercial buildings, or the schools, or anybody that had projects like that on a parking space basis. And so those funds since 2002 have been collected coming into the city, and then we have used those funds to help offset some of the costs for three of the four locations. The three roundabouts that we had in town were partially funded from funds that were paid for from development already. Okay? So the fourth intersection, Main and Crawford, we're down to that project or not, that's part of this study, to really take a look. And from a funding standpoint, that money that's in the traffic mitigation fund can only be used for that intersection analysis. It can't be used for other locations around town yet unless the council later passes another ordinance that changes and adds more intersections to the, to the equation. So, so that money is there to fund this level of study. This will take a look, and basically the options are, well, perhaps a traffic circle. I'm not sure how that would work with the train track there. Perhaps streetlights, you know, traffic control lights, and again, I'm not sure how they'll work with the traffic with the train tracks there, or perhaps it's a do-nothing scenario with the four-way stops is what it's going to have to be. And so we will have them come into town and do the counts necessary and the analysis, look at what might be options, come up with funding options, and then at some point it'll be part of a project that will either fund with traffic mitigation dollars or traffic mitigation dollars plus grant dollars that will have to be secured for the project. So this is that planning level effort to take a look. Down the line, they'll be back with an open house similar to what happened earlier today with the building to kind of show some options and some costs and some of those kinds of things. And then at some point, the council will have to make a decision on that project and the balance of the traffic mitigation funds, what we're going to do. Now, to Richie's comment, so just as a side, these funds can be used for that. However, in the comp plan amendment process that's coming up, there is a separate section on traffic and, and traffic patterns and all those kinds of things within that planning document that will come forth. Based on economies of scale, we do anticipate them to be around town counting more than just the Main and Crawford intersection since they're going to mobilize to be here. It's a separate subcontractor from JUV, so there'll be an extra cost to that, but we'll be counting several intersections around town to take a look to see levels of service and where they're operating. It's, in general, the traffic's different. We all feel it, we see it, and the growth's happening, and the growth's coming, and it's here. Whether it's all the way down to a level service F, or, or D, or C, or even B, I can't tell you that. I mean, it's, it takes a lot of wait times. Caldwell was one of them that had a lot of wait times before we put the roundabout in. So it'll be interesting to see how these different intersections, but I agree, there's several ones that need to be looked at, options of more train crossings are probably slung in on. But, but those kinds of things are part of what a transportation analysis will look at in the comp plan, not a full-blown one like this particular intersection design, but just general concepts on traffic patterns and where things are at. So anyway, back to this one. So this task order is funded from the traffic mitigation fund, the savings that we have, and we'll take a look at that last intersection of the original 2002 study to see if there are options that are possible to do there. So we need your approval of that.
I make a motion to approve. One second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Any comments, questions by the council?
Roger, how does that intersection in the grading compare to like Weber and D around the school area?
How does it compare?
Yeah, like what's the grade difference?
Well, that's part of what we'll do here, so we'll take a real look now as the traffic's gotten worse. In 2002, I think it was B or C. It takes a lot of wait time to make it B or F, and I'm not sure that's what's happened there still. There is some confusion sometimes of people that travel through there, and if you add the train, that's a whole other thing that comes in. Just like if you add the train to traffic signals, it's a whole nother problem that gets brought into the thing. And so, yeah, I'm not sure what it's operating at. It may, the numbers may show us that it's operating at B or C, and then in our comp plan, we talk about that being acceptable. So we'll just have to see how that really is with, with the counts. We have our counters out around town, but it's, we're counting traffic loads of, you know, both from, both northbound, eastbound, you know, both ways, double strikes. It really just gives us numbers of cars that are going through an area, but it's not turn specific at various intersections. So this will give us that.
Question for folks that are maybe here tonight or hear about this in the future, especially with the comp plan being worked on over the next year or two, are there ways that average citizens can, can get involved, especially if they're concerned about traffic and traffic flow? What would be some entry points for that discussion?
Well, when we get into the traffic element of the comp plan, I mean, that's the time for some of those things. I'm not suggesting that we're going to be counting intersections that lead to new roads out cross-country and stuff like that. That's not part of the comp plan process necessarily, but it's going to be looking at what our current traffic situation is, and if there's intersections operating at lower levels of service or where they're going. And then it's done based on the projections of growth that are put in there, too. So we'll see how those flush out. It's not most likely going to get better as the growth keeps happening. I mean, it's just more cars. So hopefully, we have a size, I mean, when Crawford Avenue is done out here, for example, it's wide enough, and I'm not suggesting where we did this, but it's wide enough to go to four lanes, two-wheeled ways, no parking and no center turn lane. So they could be re-struck and done that way to travel more cars through. I'm not sure that's the option we'd want to have, but things like that are possible out there. So our road widths at 40 feet can accommodate more cars if we choose to stripe them that way. I'm not sure that's the option anybody would want to choose. There would be a big impact downtown if we didn't have parking for, for example.
And I know most of our improvements, maybe when we get road upgrades, it's usually the new developments paying for that. How do we go about, like we put you to say, about putting in brand-new roads where there's not a new development going through? Is that simply a budgeting process and paying for it ourselves? Or are there any other options there?
Yeah, I mean, basically, the, this traffic mitigation funding came from developer concerns at the time saying, I mean, where this came from is there's a developer looking at Crawford and Weber where the housing tract's going now for some commercial things. Their traffic analysis showed that intersections at Main and Crawford and H and Main were going to be problems, and the stance at that time was, well, you need to fix those intersections that far away, even though the other traffic was adding to it, but wasn't the total. And so they were able to come to the council and lobby the council about doing the study in 2002, and then in place, putting in place a traffic mitigation plan so that all developers paid a portion of the cost, and then we took that money and put it with grants and projects like that and built the infrastructure. So I would suspect something like that would come from something like that. Or the city can always, in the future, take on a road project out cross-country on their own and condemn right-ofway if needed, or buy right-ofway, or, or any of those kinds of things. It's tougher to use grant funds to do that because of the process you have to use under state and federal rules to use grant dollars to buy property. So even if you use city property and then you go after grants later, you have a whole hurdle things that you have to cross the Ts and not the Is. So it's easier if you had a project going out cross-country to budget yourself. I mean, it just really is. The days of, when we put H Street across with the train tracks down there, the crossing there, that was still at a time when TIB was relatively easy, and in fact, we got that grant funded. They basically changed their program to fund that project, and others got to use the same process because we put that crossing and roadway in to take cars away from Main and H, and so we were able to fund it that way. It's going to be harder to find another intersection to be able to do that, and it's going to be even harder to find funding that you could do that with anymore. But, okay.
Good? No. So we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next up, item annexation request, Mark Skolczulich, Habitat for Humanity Spokane. Roger, do you want to talk on that, or do you want me to?
Yeah, I can. Long memo, I apologize. Maybe I should just ask those questions. So basically, Mark Skolczulich just came in and has petitioned the city to annex some property south of his facility, which is Parkway Shuttle Lake, or Parkway Off. And so the process under state laws is, in the petition method, is he goes out, and in this case, he owns all the parcels but one little small one that's owned by Habitat, but he goes out and gets a petition signed by only 10% of the assessed valuation of owners to start this process. And so he's done that, when it comes back to us, then the council has some specific things that they have to look at, and I put a motion in there, basically, it's, you have to decide if they will assume any of the city's indebtedness for those parcels, that it is designation of commercial diversified, and if there's any other additional lands to include. Those are the things you have to do by RCW to carry it forward. Assuming you pass this motion later, then Mark, in his, in this case, will have to go out and have another petition signed. It's a 60% assessed valuation petition signed, but again, when they got 100%, that's just a paper trail thing. But that will come back ultimately, and then the council will set a hearing date on the proposed annexation. The only thing that's really out there that's a little bit, we haven't got a response back yet, is from the county as it relates to South Dalton, or South Caldwell, and it turns into South Dalton and the train track crossing and all that. You all probably drove on that road, you know the shape of it. The county's process typically is they want us to include the entire roadway in the annexation boundary. At this point, Mark has talked about, really, keeping the property the way it is, it's for future, those kinds of things, may not need access onto that road, although there may be access onto the highway, but he has access from his existing facility, so he may not need commercial access or driving access, et cetera, from there. And that's where the county's going to come back to us and say, what about, or what if? So currently, the boundary does not include that right-ofway. And there may be pushback from the county about their policy or their rules or what they're really going to say. I've tried to get two different engineers with the county to give me what their policy rule or what it is going to be about that roadway, and haven't got anywhere on either one of them. And Mark applied for this a while ago, and it's finally like, okay, well, we're going to get to this step. And then, once he comes back to do the petition, we schedule a public hearing, I'll let the county know, okay, we're going to have a hearing on this, now's your chance, because they may come to you, and when I say they, the county, and there may be something that requires us to, to, to accept that roadway. It'd be great to say, sure, improve it first, but I'm not sure that's going to be the answer. We may get stuck with it. And so that's a question you guys got to decide, is when you get after the hearing, do you want to annex it or not? And if you do, and if we have to take the road, do you want to annex it or not? I mean, that's a choice you still have to make. So anyway, that's kind of goes with this motion, or this, this memo, but that's kind of a little history of what's happening with that roadway and where that may fall. You know, the length of roadway improvement across there and train crossing deal with Burlington Northern, you know, we could spend a million dollars on that length across the frontage pretty easy. on that length across the frontage pretty easy. And all the folks that live out there, live in the county, we wouldn't get any assessment from them for road taxes or anything. So the county gentleman that I talked to understands that issue relative to those folks not contributing to the city, but they are residents of the town. They may shop here. And then we have a lot of residents that come off the highway, go to their houses, pass through, go to the north part of the county. I mean, I get all that. So it's a choice that down the line you may have to make. And maybe a road that gets added to the list of roads to improve in the future, more than just a patch, pothole here and there. But anyway, back to the memo. So there's, there's a motion there.
I've got it right here.
Yep. That's all we need for tonight. And then Mark will have some more work to do.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to accept 7%. Initiators petition dated March 14, 2023, to require assumption of city indebtedness by the annexation area and to designate the zoning of the annexation area as diversified commercial DC. The four parcels located on the west side of North Arden World identified as Spokane County Assessor parcel numbers. Can you copy that?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
That one?
Give me a second.
I have some questions.
Mark is here.
Oh, yeah. On page three of your memo, Roger, the bullet point at the top, it seemed to say the recommendation is to accept this as diversified commercial. I don't know who Mark is, but is that what petitioner wants? Does he want?
Yep. So, I mean, yes, because then he would allow his, that would allow him, if in the future, to expand his business that way onto property that we would regulate relative to critical areas and stormwater and access and all those kinds of things. I made a note here. Now realize that in our commercial diversified zone, if somebody made a decision to change its use to something way more intensive, apartments, okay, there's a huge issue there relative to access, relative to water supply, relative to sewer. So as it sits now, it comes in as a non-conforming farm ground, for sake of a better term.
But this is a start.
Yes, this is just a start.
And it's the default, right? When we annex something, is that, did I read that?
We've basically pre-zoned the annexation areas, yes, through the comp plan process and our planning effort. And so that's what's coming in as.
Okay.
Quick question. Would one of the options that, I'm just wanting to make sure I understand, would one of the options that might make sense would be to ask the property owners on the other side of the road to say, do you want to be annexed too? So we get the whole road? Or does that not?
They're not in the UGA boundary.
Okay, thank you.
So they cannot.
Okay, that's great. So that's not even on the table. It's, do we want this junk plus the road or minus the road?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. The one you've been waiting for, item F, Deer Park City Hall Discrediting Discussion. What we're going to do is we're going to start with the council members first, then we'll go to the others.
If I could launch the discussion, would that be okay to help?
We're going to go in order. Sorry.
Yeah, it's, this has been very upsetting for me. We're still feeling the costs and the repercussions of the pandemic. With raising taxes, people have not had the ability to make ends meet. There's other, many other issues in here. I don't think the citizens in Deer Park wants their taxes raised. And number two, like I said previously, this is the wrong time. We need, as a council, we need to be more prudent at saving money in case of a disaster, in case of something really vital for our citizens. I lost my train of thought. I waited so long for this.
Six years.
Anyway, I just, it's just inopportune time. I mean, how would you feel if, you know, you're having difficulty making ends meet, especially with the grocery prices going up and so forth? Interior city, which is a small community city, is building a grand, brand new city hall. What would that make you feel? I pay my taxes, but you know, it's leaving me out of the loop. I don't know if you understand what I'm trying to say. With the increase in taxes and the ability to maintain homes, I mean, there's a lot of people going bankrupt out there. It really is.
No tax incomes. The other ones have tax incomes?
Yeah.
Good?
No, that's, I better shut up.
Jason?
The price tag is shocking. It's a big price tag. It will only go up in the future. At some point, we will have to do something for our, for our city hall. So I think, on the financial side, which I think we can talk about at a future time, I think ultimately the citizens should vote on that, whether to pass a bond. I think we should, of this kind of magnitude, 18, $20 million, something like that, that should be really in the hands of the citizens. Personally, between the two concepts that were presented, I like the remodel option. It gives us more square footage. It's a little bit more expensive, but it does give us more square footage. It also retains the, you know, the historic part of the building, which I think if we're going to, we're going to do this. And the other one looks pretty similar. I think we ought to preserve some of the history of Deer Park here. Somebody pointed out that we've got a lot of faces on this wall of people who came through this building and graduated. And many of those are still here in the community. And I think they would want at least some of this building preserved.
Good? Heather, you're up. Heather, are you still there? Now we'll go to you.
Thank you all for being here. I'm excited to hear everyone's comments. And thank you to Boyd and Craig for coming out. The architects coming out of the open house this afternoon for everybody that came and shared comments. You can see some of the concepts that are there that we were able to discuss this afternoon. You can see, you know, we had our cheesy little poll there on the whiteboard. We also had some other places for people to make comments. Just kind of a reminder on where we're at in the process. We started two and a half years ago or so, as I began bringing this up in response to, we were spending some money at that point on some new HVAC systems and some other maintenance issues. And we were, it seemed like a good amount of money. And as we dug into that, I began to realize the critical condition that the building seemed to be in. And so we are at this point now where we've commissioned a study. We've had some really good data. For those of you that are interested, there's 80-plus pages detailing exactly what the building is today in the bones and in the core and all the different systems. So that can be really helpful. And we've gotten to this point because we're still at that point of deciding what to do next. We talk about two options. There's really the third option, and that certainly could be what we end up with. That third option is the do-nothing option. But just to help us kind of put that in context, we're two and a half years in and we just got a drawing. We're five years out at least from a completed building. And one of my deep concerns is that the do-nothing option is actually choosing the ultimate demo and rebuild of this building. Because at some point, we lose the capability to even choose a remodel.
That would take quite a few years.
Thank you for letting me continue speaking. And that, I would agree. I would agree. We don't know the timeline on that. And that's one of those pieces of uncertainty. But one of the things I keep coming back to is, if it's eight to 10 years from start to completed building, will we have that kind of time available in the future? I think it's wise of us to be planning and considering, while we have lots of time, so there's no rush to this decision, and yet we should continue moving forward until we get to a point where we do put it to the table. So that we have that ultimate, here's what we think as the leadership of the community that we should do, yes or no. And to get to that point today, we're not diving into the funding concepts. That's for the future. How do we actually get the meat and the potatoes and the money? That's a valid discussion. We've got to have that. But for today, we really need to choose a direction. Because I don't want to choose what to pay until I know what I'm paying for. And so I really appreciate everyone's input. I hope everyone will tell us clearly their preference, particularly on concepts B versus C, so that we get a clear sense as a council on what direction to lead our city forward in. Because the do-nothing option is really a choice to eventually let the building crumple. And we should at least choose intentionally. Whatever we should do, we should do it on purpose. So thank you for having this discussion and citizens. We hope that you'll share kind of that B or C option. I'd be curious, I don't know as well. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate speaking with people earlier today. I really enjoyed hearing what everyone had to say. I pretty much am going to say what Jason said. I thought the price tag was a little shocking. It definitely has to go for a vote for people and they'll ultimately decide one way or the other. And for me personally, keeping the historic value is the most important thing, whichever direction we go. I would not want to lose any of that whatsoever. It's really important to me.
Good?
Yep.
I'm going to give you my two cents. This building's been here for over 100 years. Do we have another 20 years in it? Can that be answered? Boyd?
I don't know if I can answer that definitively. With proper maintenance, then probably there's going to be some things that would need to be done in these next 20 years. There's obviously like a sewer pump downstairs that's coming to the end of its life and we don't want that to fail. There are some things that would need to be done. But yeah, 20 years can happen, but it's also still going to cost you money there too. Not $20 million, but.
Because right now is not a good time for the people to be spending money. We have personal property taxes just went up. We're in a slight recession. That's my two cents. I think we can wait. Still plan, like Caleb said, come up with a design, A, B, or C, and go from there and try to get funding. I'll take calls from the audience. Keep it to two minutes. Mike, you were first up.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here, I'm Michael H. I'm here representing the Historical Society for Clayton and Deer Park. They would like to go on record as having you support the continuation of the center of the building, which was the original design, the original building, when it was built, as you said, over 100 years ago. They would like that maintained. Whatever happens to the rest of it is going to be based on money, is going to be based on a lot of design issues and many other things. As you said, it's a long time coming. You aren't going to have funding soon. So the other request from the Historical Society is to have you research that portion of the building, the center portion, put on historical register, if it can be dismantled and maintained as an individual entity to be put on historical register. And there's time to do that. It's time to research anyway, even if it doesn't happen.
Good thought.
The majority of those people went to school here. I didn't. I don't have any ties to the building other than the 20 years I spent in here. But the majority of people around here do have a connection to the building, would like to see it maintained. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else?
I'm ready to move the waters now. I'm a millennial. We tend to flip out every time Disney announces they're going to remake one of their favorite, you know, our animated films. Disney says, oh, we're going to, like, the Little Mermaid's coming out. We flip out. We don't want it to get touched. So I understand that if this building, if we decide it's going to be torn down or whatever, you're going to have a lot of people, like the Historical Society, come and say, we want to designate this as a landmark. So here's another idea that I'll put out there, and it's going to be very expensive. But we've got remain the same, we've got rebuild, we've got remodel. There's another R that we're not considering. Let's relocate. Is this area right here, is this the proper building for city hall? I think as we continue, you should look into other properties and seeing, because it's all going to be expensive, but look at other properties and see, is that a more appropriate place for a city hall? Because my personal opinion, I think this would make a great historical building at some point. But if it's for a city hall for the '30s, '40s, '50s, I don't think so. So I just would like that idea to be looked at. Maybe a relocation of city hall. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Brandon, to answer that, we do have property east of here. And that was my thought on item C, is build over there, leave this here.
Well, and I thought, and this is just me because I want to have an idea. What if you have the property of where the old, what was it, Rosears? What about that property? Just throwing something out.
Yeah, but we have property down east of town. Anybody else? Ryan?
Ryan Moore. Great questions. Lead to outside consultation and usually pretty good ideas, and then decisions are made. And then you get to figure out if that was actually a great question or good consultation or a good idea or useful at all. And once again, I would like to bring another case in point. I see audiovisual equipment. And I remember a few years ago, when there was an audit of this building for improvements, and they looked at things like windows that didn't quite close and stuff like that, and how we can improve or what it would cost to take care of the roof, I believe it was. Some things happened along that time, and we were using whiteboards that stood up there. And we had a projector that we would roll in and use a laptop. And something happened where somebody said, boy, that's really kind of clunky and old. Why would we use a whiteboard? And why would we bring in extra equipment? Why don't we install things and have speaker systems? So we've got these speakers that got installed. And whether it was a grant or just money spent or otherwise. And we've got these great monitors that are installed. And I think I can count on one hand the times that I've seen those great uses of dollars at the time put to work. We've got microphone systems that I don't see on the desk. So sometimes good questions don't necessarily bring good decisions financially. And I think there's all kinds of great ideas out there. Make sure what you actually put to use can be put into practice usefully and meaningfully and that it is actually an improvement. Thank you.
I think you've said everything.
Young lady.
So, hi, I'm Jessie. I am a millennial mom who's from here and grew up in Deer Park. My husband's family's been here forever. And I'm now raising my kid in this community. And the thing that continues to set Deer Park apart from Spokane is we have the small-town charm and feel. And I think that it's elemental as someone wanting my kid to grow up in this community, that she has that sense of small-town community, of what makes Deer Park special, that we're not just another ticky-tacky suburb of another bigger city kind of absorbed in that. And I think maintaining what makes us special is really going to continue to set us apart. I do have a question in regards to kind of the concept of the big sort of palatial plans. Is there a way to maybe make things, is there a necessity, I guess, for something so large and extravagant when we are talking about costs and talking about kind of those plans moving forward? Of course, there's a need for building improvements and maintaining that to preserve its usability. But also, do we need something so massive, I guess, would be my other cost and concern.
That's a, can I respond? That's a great question. And that was one that we were discussing this afternoon at the open house, the architects and several of us standing there. One of the pluses about concept C is the little bit more in square footage that it comes with. And one of the reasons the city hall task force kind of went ahead and dismissed concept A, you notice that's not up there, is because it was the smallest building. And when we look at our current needs, this building is meeting our current needs, right? There's all the maintenance issues, that's a separate thing. But from a, what do we need as a staff, as a talent? It meets our current
It meets our current needs. But when we think about having that building here for 20, 30, 40, 50 years, it does not meet our future needs. So, based on our best understanding of assessing our current needs, our future needs, growth, we do think we need it. That is not an area that I have expertise in. So, we're relying on our architects to help us understand that. But that's their professional assessment is to say, concepts B and C help get us to a place where we have a long-term building with the space for the future growth that we will need at that point. And one of the big pluses is that, like with concept C, when we add some basement area onto that end of the building as part of the new addition, the basement can be really designed to free up space in the rest of the building for other uses. Then we actually get that part of the building cheaper. So, the basement is the cheapest. So, when we look at what we need today, yes, it would seem like, well, do we have to do all this? The answer is no, because we have multiple nonprofits and different things that we provide space for, which isn't a primary part of being the government. And yet, when we think about what kind of town we want to be, the answer comes back to, yeah, we probably do need that space if we want to continue providing those opportunities for those organizations. So, that's a great question. Thanks for asking. Did I give you any bit of the reasoning behind it?
Yeah, it makes perfect sense. It just, I, I don't know. I tend to be a little bit more kind of conservative in my weight of, if there are so many concerns about the funding portion of it and the budgeting, what do we really need? And is there a way to compromise and sort of make needed change, but also kind of, I guess, work around both sides of the coin? Would be my only thought on that.
I'm going to add to that. We've got this project going on, and then we've got this police research going on. It looks to me like we've got two very expensive, very, very expensive propositions on the table. And I, as a citizen, no. You know, pick one. Pick what you like, and let's put it to the people. But you can't have both. We just, we can't afford it. You know, we had an incident in the Swinier Park again this last week. And I agree that we need more assistance from the Sheriff's Department. Sorry. And, you know, but we're talking two multi-multi-million dollar projects here that I just don't think the people of Deer Park, as Dee said, we have a lot of people here on limited incomes, on set incomes. And somewhere it has to stop. You know, it's just like, gee, we've got this money, and we're just finding all kinds of really fun things to spend on. Well, we don't have the money.
If I could just, on top of what Linda just said, the thought has come to me, we've got a huge amount of growth coming. With that growth comes kids. With kids comes school needs. And we're going to start needing more school dollars. So, the taxpayers, you know, are going to be funding that also, or a portion of it. I've lived here 30-plus years. I got to work, had the kids in school, taxes getting raised. Now I get to retire. I don't have overtime anymore.
Yes.
This is it. I want to support the kids that are growing up in this town. I want to support this town being a community town. But I also want to see the safety of the kids to be able to use this town like the previous generations did. I unfortunately live close to the park, if anybody is unaware of that, and I know what goes on over there. We need help. So, between more money for our kids, our community, our safety, we got to figure out priorities.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
How do you feel, Linda?
I feel like we're, like we're thinking we're a 10,000 citizen town instead of a 4,600 citizen town, you know? I mean, they keep saying, well, we have a healthy budget. Well, we won't if you guys keep spending our money. And, you know, every time you get a little money, you want to go off and spend it on, you know?
Some value.
Yeah, I'm Tim. And I'm just shocked when I look around and I see what's going on at the park, and we need a new pool, and we need some places for kids to go and do stuff. And we're ignoring that. If you go out and look on Facebook, people are saying the kids have nowhere to go, nothing to do. But, you know, let's, I'd rather spend $18 million to put a community pool and a rec center up there than a new City Hall. That's my view. Out east? Yeah, out east.
Scotty, Scott.
Yeah, this food for thought, next year, the school's going to be, I think, going through a $40 million bond.
February.
Jesus.
February of '24.
How much?
February, February of '24, 2024.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, there's going to be another bond coming up to support that new school. So, you know, there's more bonds. I'm a member of the city too, so. Bree, thanks for calling that.
You know, so, the way I was looking at it is, all the proposals you guys have, and, you know, I'm mayor and everybody talking about infrastructure. And it's like, well, every small town I've ever lived in is always behind on infrastructure. Because the towns get bad or bigger, the towns get bigger, the infrastructure is not there to support it. And that's what's already occurring here. So, both the proposals you guys have up there, I personally would rather have a new one. It's not because I don't like, you know, the history of this building and everything. And I know there's a contingency that I talked with the architects earlier today. But being in construction almost my entire life, doing commercial buildings, doing attachments to existing structures, even though you have that contingency, you can go through that with one big problem. And then where do you get the money? Or what do you cut off? That's why I'm more for a new construction kind of deal. We're going to do it whether it's here, so you can see the building, or you can do it over east, what the mayor was saying. The other thing is, is once again, infrastructure. Yes, we got a place holding up a police officers, which we, you know, currently have. But the city's getting too big. We're going to need a full police department eventually. We may have some jail cells. But we're going to do it, and you're going to propose this big number to the public to pay for it. But this must be prepared. It must be prepared for the future, have everything in place so that 20 or 10 years from now, until this is built, we're not asking to another bond for a police department, to have a police department, you know, jail cells or whatever. Because all you're doing is nickel and dime it, and that should be included in this. I'm a little surprised it's not. I mean, you guys went through a lot of work, a lot of money, or a lot of time to get these plans in, and you're still dying on the infrastructure. What about, the other thing I was thinking, is if we're so dead set and people don't want, and I understand, I'm on a set income, yeah, I'm young, shouldn't be, but I am. So, I don't want my taxes going up anymore either. But what about proposing something, I noticed you didn't get a number, to do a complete, overall of this existing building?
I can answer that question for you. That was concept A, where instead of, you notice, the additions or the different questions, concept A was taking the exact footprint that we have here and then refurbishing and remodeling that. That was the one that the City Hall Task Force eventually said, that doesn't get us to what we need 10, 20 years down the road, and yet it costs about the same, so let's not spend the money.
But they're already, that doesn't make a ton of sense, because they're already remodeling the main structure anyways, and that's in that proposal.
So, I would love to answer that.
Why the number would be so much higher just to do? I mean, you'd add a third, you'd add a floor that nobody gets to use. Get the basement, get all the plumbing and electrical updated. You know, if it came in as half the amount, if we could get it done for $10 million, I think that would be a lot easier for everybody to swallow that amount as opposed to $20 million. I mean, it's a lot of, that's a lot of money. And, you know, our community is a lot of, there's a lot of elderly, which means the majority of them, all of them are on set incomes, and they can't afford that. You know, they just can't. And I think by not proposing something that is cheaper, I think you guys are, you're going to, nothing's going to happen. I don't think the community's going to vote for that. I mean, I'm all for it myself. But like I said, I am for the newer plan. My wife's actually for the older plan, but, you know, she wants to keep the older building. But I'm just like, well, you know, sometimes you just got to let go, but I get it. But I, that's my opinion. I think, you know, maybe put forth that A that you guys had, to see what the true cost would be. See if it's enough.
We did, yeah, we did give the cost estimates for that too, and that's where it was, it was close enough. And you're welcome to look through all the details, all that's available. But at the end of the day, it just made sense that we were going to be spending that amount of money to get the, to get more of what we needed for the end.
I agree with that. I understand. And that's why I don't understand why you're going to go beg and add a police department to it.
Okay, what's up, Matt? Richie, let's give it just two minutes.
I'll try, okay. So, Caleb said that the City Hall is currently meeting the city's needs. I would actually argue that a little bit, Caleb? Just looking at the room here, it's pretty full. As the city grows, there's going to be more people that are interested in coming to these meetings. The Washington State has an Open Public Meeting Act that requires that if people can't come into the building for a state council meeting, the state council has to be postponed. So, if there was something like a police department up for discussion where people wanted to come in droves, we wouldn't be able to fit them all in. We'd have to postpone the meeting. Currently, there's other issues with the building. I've heard stories of bats flying around the main floor. There's been stories about bricks falling off by entrances and exits. So, that's, you know, the building I don't think meets the current needs. So, as far as the money, yeah, 18, 20 million, whatever it is, is shocking. But in the grand scheme of things, you know, we did a water tower for $6 million. There's lots of other multimillion dollar projects that are going on in Deer Park on a regular basis. It's just you don't hear about them all that often. At this point, there's been no research, which is, if the plan is to do the research for grants and other things that could help pay for that. So, it's not that 18 million might be the whole thing that the city pays for, or the taxpayers. There may be a portion of that that's grants or loans or, you know, whatever other things might be out there. So, that's one of the things I was going to say. All for plan C. I think there's a thing with the history that intangible value that you can't really put a number on, that's important. And that's being lost here in Deer Park with so many other historic buildings that have been lost. And that really contributes to that small-town feeling that everybody likes to talk about. And that's one of those tangible things that people can point to and say, that's been there since, you know, way beyond, you know? So, anyways, that's all. Unless I get another two minutes.
We're good, everything? We can move on? Two minutes.
This will be quick. Based on everybody's comments, the interaction with the open house today, and the comments over the last several months as we've been doing this, and the general feeling of the task force as well, I would move that the council direct the City Hall Task Force to proceed to the next phase of planning, which just involves exploring funding. So, no actual decision, but proceed to the next phase of planning using concept C. Do you need a second? I do need a second. One second. Thank you. Can make a motion, Mr. Mayor, in the middle of the meeting.
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Okay.
No.
Thank you. Okay, motion denied.
Oh, no, wait, excuse me. It passed.
It passed.
You said yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed. Now can I move on? Now can I move on?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Item nine ordinances, letter eight ordinance 2023-1015, adding new chapter 10.30 to the Deer Park Municipal Code authorizing operation of wheeled all-terrain vehicles. Second reading and public input. We'll go with public input. Joe, you want to talk on that?
Yes, I do. You know, Tim, I tend to be kind of libertarian.
Oh, I know that.
And I'm also pragmatic. And currently, we've got, personnel-wise, we have about 25% of the police we need to have as far as hours, et cetera, et cetera. And there are also problems, and this is partly due to the effects that we don't have in the basement. And so, they're constantly rushed. And it's also due to the things that are out of our control at the county level. The result is, there's not very good consequences when people do stuff. So, and that's why we currently have so many perceived, especially in smaller stuff, minor problems like vandalism, which I'm sure you're aware of right now, and traffic problems, et cetera, et cetera. So, if you pass this ORV thing, there's going to be an additional load on the deputies who are already buried. So, there won't be any enforcement, and you're going to increase the sort of problems that we already have in a slightly different way. And really, I have a couple neighbors that have ORVs. And they'll take them down and get gas, put in them before they take them to go camping. And I can't speak for the deputies. Are any of them here?
That's it.
One of them here. If they see him doing that under the current regulation, they're breaking the law. But in all likelihood, they're not going to say anything. But if you make them legal, then the problem is, somebody can be out raising hell with one. And unless, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that word. Unless you catch them right in the act, you can't do anything. So, I just think at this time, because of these other problems, that it's a terrible idea. And I also have a question, and perhaps I missed this because I haven't been coming to the meetings. I've just been looking at online agendas and stuff. This seemed to have came from nowhere. When was it originally introduced? Not when the first reading was. When was, when did this thing start?
What happened was, rather than spend $50,000 for a pickup truck for the Parks Department, we're spending $20,000 for the ATV, which is user-friendly to the law, and has maximum speed of 25.
Okay.
The rationale behind it is we saved $30,000 of your money.
Okay, I can understand that. And I could understand, Tim, if necessary, making this change that would allow the city to operate.
Roger.
One other point too, is the county just recently passed or authorized the use of them on all county roads. And up till the current sheriff we have, that wasn't permitted. And so, Sheriff Knoll just came on. That now is, under state law, his, he's allowed to do it for the county, and then each municipality has to do it separately. And so, up to that point, it couldn't come forward. So, that just happened, which, even if we weren't buying a vehicle, the school district does. the school district does, the Vista does, lots of other utilities can ride, have drove these on the roads. And so now this action will make it so we're all legal rather than we're all running around illegally on our roads for utility purposes. So that's, that's where it came.
Okay. Again, as I say, and Stevens County, they've been legal for quite a long time. I don't know about the municipalities out there as far as the cities. But it's certainly something can be written that allows government and utility operations, the school district to operate them as needed without opening up what is, is going to be a big problem as far as private keys.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move that on to the third reading.
Westman.
So, yeah, I wanted to comment on this one as well, if I can have another two minutes. So just today, watching out front of my window, there were three ORVs that went by, and it's not legal. So a few years ago, we had some health problems, and we had some of our neighbors that came over, and they plowed our driveway with their ORVs. And I was, I was very thankful for that. Didn't realize it was illegal for them to do it at the time. So people are already doing this. It's, might as well make it legal and have a way of controlling it as it goes forward. In the law as it's currently being brought forward, only city personnel are allowed to use these vehicles in parks. What I would propose is also that the city would create a day permit type situation so that for like Settlers' Day, when people are setting up booths in the park, that they could use their vehicles to transport coolers and tents and things in there. That would help alleviate a lot of problems potentially. I'm all for this. I have a 16-year-old son that I'd like to teach him to drive, and potentially giving him electric golf carts that's street legal would be far superior, and everybody would appreciate that more than having him drive a 1972 Chrysler. Just to fill that out there as well.
Mr. Mayor, does this include golf carts as well? Or that type of vehicle?
No.
It does not?
Yeah.
And why not?
Because they're not licensed. They need to conform to the license. The vehicles have a, when you buy an ATV, you can have it with a street program with just lights, the horn, turn signal, stuff like that. Golf carts, but we don't push the issue because nine years ago, they located by ordinance, and then it was deleted again because people were driving down the main streets and stuff. So.
There, there are ways to get street legal golf carts.
Yes, you can.
It's just most people don't have those.
You'd be surprised, there's a lot of them up there rather than have them. Yes, Deacon.
Deputy Nuss, would, would you care to comment on traffic infractions or anything that you've seen elsewhere in the county in relation to these?
Sure. Kind of answered what he was saying. I actually, everyone I see, I do pull over. I just can't be over there at once. Now that it's going to be legal, I'm not going to be pulling them over unless they are driving them reckless. Back to what he said, if I don't catch them in the act, there's a RCW 1031-100 laws, that's incidents that aren't committed in presence of an officer. Reckless driving is one of those incidences that we can pursue if somebody's driving them reckless. We have to be able to identify and have proof of it. We can't just go arrest someone because somebody said they did something. But that is something that we can do and that we've done around here, so.
Do you see like a higher incident of infraction from these WATVs than like a normal vehicle?
No, just because they haven't been legal at this point. So that's not something we've had an issue with. There are, I mean, people, normally when they get them, they get, you know, one thousands that are turbocharged, so are they driving fast sometimes? Yep. It's like a street bike, you know. I mean, if they have the power, sometimes they do it. But as a whole, we haven't had any issues with them.
Thank you.
All right, we need to move on. Next up, item D, ordinance 2023-1016, the Vista Electric Gas Franchise, second reading in public input. And I'm asking you to request a third reading. It's supposed to be done before May 1st, I believe.
Don't make a motion.
Wait, it's the three readings first.
Huh? That's the way with the reading? Yes, I made the motion to waive it. I'm sorry, could you put it down?
I understand.
I wish, I have a second minute.
We have a motion in second. Waiting the third reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Then let's go to.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to do something for the second reading? Does that not make you hungry?
There's really no concern.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure if there was a legal cause for the reading.
How do you know the motion?
Say motion to approve.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you are, girl. Where were you before?
I've been timing in.
Okay. Moving on to consent agenda, letter A, approval of voucher claim, check number 41046 through 41094, including EFT debits in the amount of $226,562.77 for the first April of 2023. Item B, Deer Park Airport Lease Agreement, Royce Robinson. Item C, Deer Park Airport Use Agreement, Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission. Letter D, Deer Park Airport Use Agreement, Auto Sports Northwest. Deer Park Airport Use Agreement, AMR. And last but least, Deer Park Airport Use Agreement, Sheriff.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda. Also.
We have a motion in second. Any comments, counsel?
I have one question, actually. Daryl, on, I know we're looking at those concepts for the future of the airport out there. Will, will any of those potential construction things affect any of these in the future?
Leases.
Leases or anything? Or will we still have that space for them in the future?
Are you talking to leases or the use agreements?
I'm sorry, the use agreements.
Yeah, the, I guess the pending thing that's going to affect the use agreements is the pavement. It's 1942, 1944 pavement, and it's coming apart.
As long as it holds up.
Yeah, as long as it holds up. We're looking for grants, whatever we can do to, to get that resurfaced. The last few years, it's become very popular with a lot of the police agencies to do their training out there, AMR, that sort of thing. We'd like to see a contingency.
We good? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 11, the report of departments. Jake, are you with us?
I am.
You're up, you're up.
Okay, great. So we have our first renovation for a, two buildings actually gotten into light industrial area. So we're getting those to the system, they'll be in the committee on Monday. And we, residential stuff is, is going. And as far as the paid homes, we have had some discussions with another builder coming into Dalton Creek, what that is at the run. So code enforcement wise, sent out some letters to some of the residences that have been brought up the path, to those, those property owners, so we can get something cleaned up in the area. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Jake. Daryl, you're up.
We had a pre-construction meeting today with Zettin Contractors for the sewer construction. The, we're still waiting for EDA to finish all their paperwork and get a notice to proceed. As soon as we do, they are just about ready to go, and we'll get the sewer construction underway. Other than that, we're finally and thankfully putting all the snow equipment to bed and going equipment ready.
Brad, you there?
Yes, I am.
You're up, please.
Okay, we are, the Parks Department has been really busy trying to get everything cleaned up and ready to go. All of the bathrooms in the parks are opening up and running and ready for summer. So, and then just out as the precipitation works with us to get the streets all swept up and cleaned up. But this time of year is just a lot of cleanup. The one other thing I wanted to bring up, we do have the Clean Green Event coming up, May 6th and 7th at the City Maintenance Shop. So dumpsters will be there, will be there Friday and Saturday if anybody wants to participate, so we'll go.
What's the hour time? What hours is it?
The hours are 8 to 4:30 both days.
Okay, thank you.
For Friday and Saturday.
Roger, you're up.
So Daryl stole my thunder on the EVA side of the project, but another part of it is we have some EVA reps coming in on August 20, or April 28th to tour the first two phases of work. Unfortunately, the sewer portion won't be underway, but they want to see where their dollars have been going and so forth. And so they'll be here on that date. I know you're involved, Daryl's involved, and then Joe Traore, I think, is going to be involved as well. And today, the Spokane County Steering Committee met relative to conference of plan and growth and all the new nuances that the legislature's given the agencies to plan for and so forth. And so we had a long meeting this morning in Spokane with that. And I think it's all that.
Thank you. Next up, council questions, comments, or reports. Do you want to start with you? Or would you want to go first?
Yeah.
Okay, Brandon.
The ADA. Yeah, so I'm responding to Jason and a request for ADA stuff. So I'm passing out to the council some documents that I found from preliminary quotes for multiple different things. So there's three here. Give me one or three others. I've got one. All right. So the first quote you guys have there is going to be for seven laptops. That was the request that you guys wanted for council members and stuff like that. The costs that are here are listed for emails along with access and backup. And that's through our current software management, so that's vision. That's why you see their names there. Now, if you flip to the third page there, that's to the ADA side, requesting three laptops strictly for use for ADA. And one of those things where we can monitor, we can backup. We have them in-house, we can manage it. The very last quote, sorry, I went so fast there. The very last quote is for the, I think Caleb Barra or Jason about streaming, audio, stuff like that. So what that would consist of is updating the existing stuff that we already have and bringing along a camera. This also gets rid of the microphone system that we don't use, so things can be projected out, and we don't have to worry about stuff breaking our people who come and use the council room as something else and running off with our equipment. So I just want to present that to you guys. So again, those are just some numbers there for you guys to consider for another time later, just so you guys can see what we're looking at in six minutes on it.
Thank you.
Okay. Dee, you're up.
I think I did it next.
Heather, you have your report, your comment?
Okay, thank you. Caleb? Yes, just two minutes. Yes, sir. Thank you for each of you that have been involved. I appreciate the specific folks that came in and shared comments both on all the perspectives, including the ones that were saying it feels too expensive for this moment. Just a reminder, this, this is just picking a direction. There's still many opportunities in the future for input and for an actual decision that puts boots on the ground and shovels, you know, start digging. So we're still quite a wide ways away from that. I invite you to participate in the process with us. The City Hall Task Force has space available. If you want to be involved in how those decisions get made, there's room at the table. And the next step, of course, is to then start digging into that funding question of how do we pay for it now that we've picked the direction. So I would, I would invite you to reach out to me, meet me here afterwards, share your contact info, and we appreciate being able to include you in the process. But thank you. Let's get this started.
Young lady.
Welcome.
I do have something. We are in the works of finalizing a new show's contract. We will get it before the next meeting. Finally.
Good.
Move for adjournment?
Please.
Thank you all for coming. Please come again.